Okay, Mr. Mayor, we're live and ready.
All right, sounds good. We'll go ahead and call meeting to order. It's a meeting of the Seldovia City Council, Monday, February 24th, 2025. Time is 4:37 PM. This is a work session, and we've got two topics tonight. First one, Stormwater Management Plan, the final draft, and I believe HGR is here tonight to present. And then our second item will be the FY26 budget, specifically dealing with employee wages, sick leave, and holiday pay. We'll go ahead and either Heidi or Liz, if you want to kick it off with introductions, and we can get started.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this has been a long process over the last year, a year and a half. And we've had HGR as our engineering firm helping us through the stormwater management plan. Both Casey and Irene have been here to Seldovia and have helped with the survey process. And I'm sure you've seen them, but I let them introduce themselves as here from HGR, helping present our final stormwater management plan. Take it away, Irene or Casey.
Good, thank you. I am Irene Trulidings, and I'll let Casey introduce herself.
I'm Casey Renshaw, and we are with HGR Water Resources Team. We're based out of Anchorage. We've been helping the city since about 2023, working to develop a drainage mapping and stormwater management plan. Project was funded by EPA through an Alaska Department of Conservation, Alaska Clean Waters Action Grant. And during this work session, we're going to summarize the project. First, touch on what our work in 2023 and 2024, and then discuss the stormwater master plan and central projects going forward. So I will pull up our map. So in 2023, we visited Seldovia and walked around and inventoryed the drainage. A lot of the drainage infrastructure is pretty old, but it seems to generally be working. We talked to the city's O&M staff, as well as Heidi and Jan and DOT maintenance, discussing the different locations of drainage concerns or drainage areas that were draining well. And then we also had a community survey open, and that was open to community members to provide their input on, also where drainage was working well or if they had any concerns. From that, we developed an inspection memo which mapped all of the existing drainage infrastructure, which you can see here, and then also photographed and rented some condition assessment of the drainage infrastructure. From our findings, we came up with a list of initial recommendations for locations that have, together with the city and the public's input, could use improvements. And from there, we came back in 2024, looked at those sites in a little bit more detail. And then together with the stormwater master plan, came up with potential projects for feature improvements. The study itself focused within city limits that being kind of in these orange areas, that's from the airport all the way through town and in this section as well. Within the stormwater master plan, it covers stormwater, generally talking about non-point pollutant sources, such as like sediment that comes off of gravel roads, and then finally makes its way into the stormwater system, may impact the turbidity of the stormwater downstream water bodies, as well as it might carry pollutants and other things. So finding ways to minimize non-point pollutant sources is one of our focuses. From the hydrology standpoint, we looked at drainage basins within the, within city limits. So looking at each stormwater system, how they're draining and where they're drained to. As you all know, Seldovia gets quite a bit of rain generally and snow, so we also considered that. And then we also looked at land cover in previous areas, so that affects how much stormwater is being generated and how much it's running off and flowing into the stormwater system. From these, we got flood flow analyses or storm events for the various systems within town to get a better understanding of where there might be more stormwater and what initial sizing for future projects may look like. And then from there, we were able to take input from the community and the city and bring forward a list of potential drainage improvement projects and prioritize them.
All right, I am going to take over from here. Any questions thus far? We're going to start diving into, I guess, our, the specific drainage projects we looked at and kind of the categories we used to prioritize them.
Yeah, if anyone has any questions, go ahead and speak up. Otherwise, these guys will just keep on moving.
All right, can you share the stormwater plan? We're going to go to the mast, I guess, section five. And we have submitted this to Heidi. So if it's not already on the website, I forgot to check before this meeting. This final stormwater management plan will be up on the website, the city's website here shortly. Great. So part of what we did, as Casey talked about, was we looked at, we looked at a couple priority projects for the city, and we used, we used a criteria to get here, but I'll kind of talk about which ones we looked at, and then we'll dive into what those criteria were. So we have our first, our top three projects were the Ketchumac Street Drainage, Main Street Drainage, and Vista Avenue Drainage. These are the ones that the city had prioritized, and as we can see later, were high priorities for a variety of reasons. And then through our initial investigation in 2023, and through some of the community engagement surveys, we came up with a list of other projects that we felt were going to be also up there in the higher prioritization. So that's Anderson Way, Bay Street, doing a citywide sediment basin study, Frank Raby, Lake Susan, Shoreline, Slough Bridge, Water Supply Road, and Winifred Avenue. We'll look at that prioritization table. So this is the, this is our criteria that we used when looking at not just those projects, but a full suite of the stormwater systems that are in Seldovia. So we looked at age of infrastructure, and to make it straightforward for ourselves, kind of lumped all of these criteria into three brackets so that it was easy to identify and easy to prioritize for each stormwater system. So we did age of infrastructure, the visual inspection ratings. So that's when, when we were out there between 2023 and 2024, looking at how corroded it was, how, how much water was actually getting into the stormwater system in the first place, and sometimes if we could even find the inlets. And then we have annual cost impact, and that was a high-level look at how much maintenance something might cost on a regular basis, and if it were to fail, how much it might cost to fix on an emergency basis. And then last is community impact. So that is how, generally, how many people might be impacted by this, whether it is isolated. So it's an end of, end of a road issue. If it's a larger issue of a neighborhood or a street, or if it's community-wide, so if it's on Main Street or along the airport road where folks are driving on a regular basis. So this is the full list of all of the stormwater infrastructure systems that we looked at and their prioritization scores. So as you can see, a lot of the ones on the city's priority list, Ketchumac Main Street and Vista, were up there in the list of top projects. And then, and then some of these, we also utilized community input to help us rate them. And this is all, like I said, in the stormwater management plan, so you can take a peek in there. And in the appendices, we have a larger list of a larger table, I guess, of what, of what the details of each of these are and what our notes are for this infrastructure. So some of these projects will be moving forward. The city was able to get additional grant funding to move some of these projects forward into design, which is excellent and very exciting for us, as we really like to see some of, some of our work able to be immediately used to help the city find additional funding. I believe one of those is Ketchumac. Sorry, Heidi, I might have to ask you to jump in with which projects got funded.
Yes, I can do that real quick. So Ketchumac was not funded, unfortunately, but Main Street, the two inlets. And so it's the, the design for both inlets on Main Street and then construction on one, because otherwise it went over the budget for the entire project, as well as the design and culvert replacement for Frank Raby and Vista.
Thank you. And then also some of the O&M equipment. Yes. Yeah, Casey, the new O&M equipment for sweeping and vacuum truck.
No vacuum truck. We wish. We're going to try for that one again, but the pickup broom, yes. For the, for the pickup broom attachment for the loader is included, and we're hoping to order that this spring, as soon as our paperwork's finalized.
Exciting. Well, I can, I guess I will maybe open it back up for questions based on the prioritization table. We're happy to run through some of these proposed drainage improvement projects, happy to look at some map. I will, we're here to answer questions. I don't want to walk you through too much that you intend on reading through anyway, but also happy to kind of give, give folks a general idea of what the projects are. Otherwise, we can move into kind of like what some of the general recommendations for Seldovia are.
Any specific questions from council so far? Okay, I think we're all ears, Irene. Probably just keep on moving.
All right, then we can, sorry for the scrolling, but we'll kind of peruse through. We talk about, in section six, we talk about variety of these drainage improvement projects and kind of give an overall description, talk about what the O&M needs are, and then talk about cost for each of these projects. So we've got, we've got survey, engineering and design, and estimated construction. So that, we've got Ketchumac, we've got Main Street in here, and then we can keep scrolling, Frank Raby, the sediment basin study, Vista Avenue. And then we roll into a table of stormwater infrastructure-specific recommendations. So this runs through all of the, all of the specific systems in Seldovia. What our acronym for it was within our, our infrastructure mapping, the general location of, of that stormwater system, where it landed on our prioritization score, some general O&M recommendations, and also long-term recommendations. So even if it didn't end up in our, in our top five of, of our summary for, for developing that higher prioritization and project, project drainage improvement, we were at least able to kind of give a general recommendation for a number of these projects on, on what, what we are hoping you guys are going to be able to do here in the next however many years. So that's a pretty big table. We can kind of scroll through that. And then section seven is all of our general stormwater recommendations. So that kind of covers here in 7.1, a bunch of recommendations on planning, design, and construction. Talks about developing green infrastructure, working with community partners, adding or reviewing water quality data and inputs. And then some fun things like installing stormwater manholes that that alert folks to the storm drains flow to the waterway. I'm sure you've all seen the ones that have the salmon on it, and I think we have a photo in one of the appendices. And then here in some point two, we talk about the city code building requirements and land use. Gives, gives folks a general idea of where you could source other codes that could be utilized for the city of Seldovia. Sitcut and Homer are both, are both some small municipalities that have, that have some good code examples for their stormwater system. 7.3, we talk about operations and maintenance recommendations specific to stormwater. So that's acquiring fleet equipment like the, like the sweeper and, and the back truck, which will be on the future request list. And then coming up with an O&M plan and implementing sediment control measures to help reduce the sediment that ends up in the curb and gutters and eventually in the system. We also talk about some recommendations for, for snow storage and disposal. I guess I should have started with, a lot of these recommendations may already be in place, but this is a good place to summarize and to, to collect all of those activities. So for snow storage, continuing the current agreements with DOT and SVT on snow storage. Just reminding folks where not to dispose of snow and where, and acknowledging that there is a storm or that there is a snow storage plan. And then a short section on harbor and boating activities with a recommendation to look at the Alaska Clean Harbors and develop a SWIP plan. And then we also talk about community involvement. So that's some stormwater education and some pilot projects for green infrastructure that could be in public spaces and collaborating with the school and the city to promote and educate our youth on, on clean stormwater. The next section, I can run through pretty quickly, its benefits to the water body. So it's basically everything we just talked about in that section seven. But reframing it to talk about how it is, like why implementing the general recommendations will be beneficial to, to the city of Seldovia and to the water bodies like Seldovia Bay. So we can kind of breeze through that one. And lastly is partnership programs. That was an important piece of, of discussion with the city on, on having this section. And I think it was a topic that I discussed with, with you guys the last time I presented, was having the section focusing on alternative funding programs and, and future partnerships that the city could look towards. So I think this is a really great list of different programs, and it's definitely not exhaustive. I'm sure there are more out there, but there's a pretty good list of, of programs and partnerships in here for the city to reference. And that is the end of what we have planned to discuss. And we have, we've got our drainage poster we can look at. If, if anyone has any specific questions, we'll be sending this down to Heidi and Jan here next week, or this week, later this week. And this will be, this will live in the city's office and should show where all of the existing stormwater infrastructure is. Any questions, thoughts, concerns?
All right, anyone have any questions, comments for Irene or Casey this evening?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, I was just going to say, a tremendous document that's been put together for Seldovia. I want to compliment all those involved. This is a document that we're going to be able to use for the years forward, so I'm really impressed. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. It has been a pleasure for, for both Casey and I to have worked on this project. Very much, we've worked closely with Heidi, Jan, and Liz, and it has been, been a lot of fun.
Yeah, thanks, Vivian, for those comments. Same, same, Irene. Yeah, as the, as the city's been slowly moving forward here, making a lot of progress with our, you know, our capital improvements, we've found that obviously having a number of these plans in place is certainly been beneficial for us and not, you know, and also mandatory in some cases to move ahead with trying to secure funding to fix some of these issues. So yeah, this will be another piece of the, of the pie going forward to help us with our, with our CIP in, you know, maintaining our infrastructure and getting a lot, much of our infrastructure upgraded, replaced, repaired, et cetera. So appreciate all of your guys' hard work on this. And yeah, this should be a pretty valuable tool for us moving forward.
We're very happy to hear that.
Great. Any additional comments from council, or was there anyone from the public that wanted to weigh in, Liz?
Not seeing anyone from the public, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor Campbell.
Yep, go ahead, John.
I just have one, and this is probably, I don't know, maybe the folks know, but the other two villages down the line, do they have similar projects going? Does anybody know? Like Nanwallak or Port Graham, do they have stormwater plans? Are they working on those as well?
Not that I know of. I, I do not believe so. At least I don't think Port Graham does. I'm not sure about Nanwallak.
Okay, but what I'm getting at is those stormwater trucks are pretty expensive. And I was just wondering if maybe anybody's seen some of these rural Alaska communities partnering with some other villages and maybe to share a truck like that with the shrinking federal dollars. I'm just, because those trucks are pretty expensive and, and won't see high use in a small village like this.
Yeah, I don't know if it's been brought up about, you know, Heidi, if you looked in or I imagine Homer's got a couple of the sucker trucks, the back trucks over there. I don't know if it's something.
Yeah, if they had more than one, I'd be really be surprised. I don't see that happening.
Yeah, I'd just be curious if it was something we could, you know, in the interim, while we're, you know, trying to get our own, if we were ever, ever able to get our own, able to contract with them to send a truck, you know, over to do something like that.
Through, through the mayor, I did speak with Tyler about it because they sent, so I'm not sure about the city of Homer, but DOT, I guess, a decade ago, I'm not really sure the exact timeframe, but around a decade ago, did send a back truck over and cleaned out the stormwater drains. But it sounds like why that doesn't regularly happen is they only have one for our area.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. And so if you partner with a couple other municipalities, you might be able to fund a truck quicker and see it have more use. So I was just, just curious. I've spent many hours working on those trucks. So even where I'm from, we only had one truck per district.
Yeah, the other, the other thought on that might be the borough, too. Yeah, the other, the other thought on that might be the borough too.
Exactly, that's.
Borough's got miles of roads and infrastructure that they maintain all over the Kenai Peninsula. I I don't even, maybe they don't even have any sucker trucks, but. It's possible that they they would be another resource as well.
Right, you might be able to lease it for a few days or for a week and get the work done and. I don't know. Okay.
Moving on what Heidi was saying. From our conversations with Tyler, it sounded like they were able to. Package into other DOT projects, bring a truck over. So if. You guys have the Quebec Airport project going on. So there was, excuse me, um, it might be something that can be worked into those kinds of projects.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a good idea. We'll um, we'll have to definitely keep all that in mind moving, moving forward here, so. Any other additional comments, questions?
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Jack.
Uh, what I wanna know is there a monitoring program for the stormwater runoff? Uh, in place? And if so, does there come any liability from an en- environmental standpoint? That the city could be held liable?
Uh, no, there is not a monitoring program. Uh, that is currently active in in Saldovia.
Heidi, might be able to speak more to this, but smaller communities, DEC regulates slightly differently than something like a larger. Community or municipality that has a specific, um, what they call like an MS four permit. Um, so it's really based on what the community's interest is and. Their involvement in keeping the stormwater and the downstream water bodies. Um, as big as possible in terms of water quality. So it is something that's briefly discussed in the Stormwater Management Plan is that. Water quality sampling is something that there seems to be, there looks like in the past. Um, so the Saldovia Village tribes done a little bit of um sampling. It's not really something that's. Been consistent and so it's something to determine if a monitoring program would be of value and um. Building a program uh potentially off of that to determine what the water quality standard, uh, getting a baseline would be.
Thanks, Jack. Anyone else? All right. Well, thanks you guys for um presenting tonight. We really appreciate the. Um, the final product and I'm sure the administration will put it to good use here in short order. Heidi or Liz, did you guys have anything else for um on this topic tonight?
Not this time, Mr.
Okay.
Actually, I take that back, Mr. Mayor. I will say that this is on the agenda for adoption tonight, so.
Correct.
Hopefully everybody had a time to look at it and then it'll it'll come up at the next meeting. So thank you, Irene and Casey.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks you guys. Have a good evening.
You as well. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on down to item B two. Uh, this is the second item tonight regarding the FY twenty six budget. Um, specifically here to talk about employee wages, uh, sick leave and holiday pay. Heidi or Liz, whoever wants to take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, so Liz is gonna share this for me. Um, and as said, this is just the kickoff for FY twenty six budget questions. We're just gonna jump. Uh, and a lot of this has to do with the fact that the state, uh, there was that ballot measure that went through last fall that implements. Uh, the requirement for sick leave and we'll get there, but I just wanted to start off with a little bit of the basics. You'll see. Um, the agenda is gonna go over a quick overview of municipal funds, just as a good reminder. FY twenty five budgeted wages as well as projected wages. FY twenty six wage increase considerations, including a wage scale. Uh, and that's the FY twenty five draft wage scale. I haven't presented this to council yet, but during the budget last year. Um, I started working on it and trying to uh ensure that our wages are up to. Industry standards for the size of our community using the AML salary um. Salary, I used a couple of different tools, but they they have a a. A salary document. I can't think of the word for it.
Guideline, guideline.
Guidelines, yeah. Uh, and then talking about sick leave and potentially some other considerations like holiday pay. So I'm sure you guys have seen this all before, but just as a good reminder, the quick overview of municipal funds. Um, the city's budget consists of the general fund, which is always a major fund. And then six special revenue funds. Uh, the general fund makes up fifty three percent of the budget and that's our public safety. Public Works, Council, Administration, uh, and those revenues are, the expenses. Um, come from the different departments and the revenues go back into the overall general fund pot. And that's primarily made up of property tax and sales tax. So fifty three percent for that. And then we have um three large special revenue funds. And sewer is in here because it's been considered a large special revenue fund. I will say, I just was in an email conversation today with our auditors. About with a recommendation to change that fund to a small fund um or a non, I should say a non-major fund. So our major funds are water, sewer and harbor right now. Um, but it depending on how this discussion goes. I am anticipating that we will consider in the FY twenty four budget. That water and harbor are our major funds as long with um the general fund. And then sewer, dock, boat haul out and senior meals are uh non-major funds and that's because they make up. Uh, less than ten percent of the budget individually. So just a nice little picture there of that's. That's um, and these are by expenses, I'll say. Um, so this is how much we're spending out of the overall budget. So if you go. To the next page, FY twenty five budgeted wa- wages. Five hundred and ninety-three thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars was what was budgeted in employee wages for FY twenty five. The total budget is one million five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, there's five hundred and fifty-seven, six hundred and fourteen dollars. Uh, so it's about forty-nine percent of the budget is wages. Oops, sorry. Nope. I skipped a line. Thirty-eight percent of the budget is wages. Um, and then if you look at. Uh, below that I wanted to, since we're halfway through the year, over halfway through the year with our reporting. What I was able to do is look at the last half and just kind of project forward. Um, if we stay on the same trend where we would end up at the end of the year. And generally, this is gonna be a little bit high. Um, because things shift and we have um more expenses on the front end of the year than the back end of the year. But with that, projecting that forward, I can see uh or anticipate that admin will spend about eighty-six percent. Of their wages, council a hundred and two percent, fire seventy-three percent, EMS seventy-four percent, public works eighty-seven percent. And that one is in large part because we were anticipating on hiring another employee and having at least two full-time employees or two point five. Um, and right now we're still at one point five. Special revenue funds, um, we are anticipating a hundred percent of that fund being spent. Uh, for the wages, uh, and that does not include the emergency wages that were allocated to the remain, with the remaining ARPA funds. Sewer eighty-four percent, dock one oh one, and that's AMHS personnel mainly. Uh, harbor one oh five and it's a little bit high because we are use, we hired an extra person last year. And utilize part port funds for that, um, but tho- those funds are accounted for. With that, uh, BHO is one oh four percent, um, and senior meals ninety-seven percent, so. Uh, really right on track. If we go to the next slide, just some general wage and con- considerations for FY twenty six. Historically, the city has utilized the February Consumer Price Index uh for Alaska to budget for inflation. That's February CPI is scheduled to be published March twelfth. Uh, the December CPI was two point three. So we can guess maybe somewhere in there. We'll know March twelfth and then we'll start uh budgeting forward on that CPI increase and k- unless. There's other recommendations from the council. Administration also recommends an additional wage increase for the city IT position. Uh, the executive administrative assistant and public works one to further align with current industry practices. Um, we're also evaluating combining rage, range ten and eleven, and you'll see that in the next slide. Um, the on the draft wage scale. We also anticipate an additional point five public works person for FY twenty six for a full two point oh FTE in the position. Um, one full, that could be one full-time and two part-time. Um, or or two full-time. It really seems like we've had some interests, but it's it's part-time interest, part-time interest, part-time interest. So. Um, trying to figure out how to piece that together, especially with the water budget right now, because if we have somebody else coming on, we want them to be able to be trained. At the water treatment plant and help ta- take care of some of those duties, um, which would exceed what our current um. What we are currently budgeted for that fund. Uh, there are changes from FY twenty five that we are anticipate coming into FY twenty six um is. The inclusion of a dedicated part-time water treatment plant employee. Um, we we implemented that last year with Radzi. That seems to be working really well, as long as he doesn't plan on going anywhere. Um, I, we will be including that and that will, that hits the water fund. Not uh, not any of the other funds. And then just before I jump into some of the bigger questions, if there are any additional considerations that you guys would like to explore and bring back for consideration, please let me know. And maybe what we should do is go to the scale so you can look at that and and kind of see if there's things on there. You guys wanna see, and this is rough and the beginning numbers. Um, weren't, there's no really rhyme or reason to the beginning numbers, except for that's kind of where people already were. Uh, so taking those positions and then uh taking, people are generally in the first three or four steps. And then projecting that out with a two percent increase per step. Uh, and we've been, I've been utilizing this as a guide moving forward to kind of formulate a system and arrange as we advertise positions. Um, but this are, this is not a a formal or adopted um. Wage scale uh to this point. So if you guys have feedback, I would greatly appreciate it. You'll see. Range ten is that public works operator one and it's a twenty-six, thirty-one, two. Hard to tell with the, where the longevity starts with my small little. Two thirty, eighty-three. Um, and so. You know, potentially looking at bumping that up a little bit if that helps get at somebody in the door. Um, looking at what some of those other standards are, it's it's kind of on par with other communities. Um, but I know that there's, there are some issues with. Uh, how the how high the cost of living and then if there's moving expenses. And so those are some of those things that we may have to consider moving forward in the future. If we really wanna get somebody in that position is is at a wage that will bring somebody in and allow them to stay and be here. Um, but otherwise, things seem to be working. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Sorry to interrupt you. Can you do me a favor? So you've got, um, can you explain to us just real quick in a nutshell? So you've got the nine steps on here. And then the A through F and longevity. So when a person is hired. Do you start them automatically at step one or is it based on experience and you can start them? Anywhere in that step you want? And then when does um longevity come into play? Yeah, let me start with those first two questions, then we'll.
Excellent questions. Yes, so this is a brand new document and just the last year. Um, they should be starting based on experience on their step. Um, and then the longevity um is is meant to be after ten years. And so I I still need to work on that depending on where people start. Um, and there's, and they're on their step, um, depending on their range, but the longevity would come in after ten years. Um, and that's the automatic increase of two percent every two years. So the step increases aren't an automatic annual increase. In fact, we haven't done any step increases to this date. Um, it's something that I would like to work towards, uh, but we have not implemented because right now we're only budgeting for COLA increases. Um, but this, you know, gives an idea of of what that range is based on experience is how this is being used at right now.
Okay, and then, and so, and I might have missed it, in the equipment one, you didn't have, let's see, is that the only one? Twenty-two, twenty-three. That looks like the only one possibly that doesn't have the longevity. What was the reason for that?
I believe that that is just a uh simple mathematical issue with the way that's transferred onto this form, because it should be on there.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
So if there's other considerations or feedback you guys have on this and you don't have to have it tonight, but just let me know. It's it's just more of a guide at this point in time. But it's something that I would like to get more solidified moving forward if it makes sense. Um, and it is nice to use it as a comparison tool to other communities and current industries and kind of making sure that we really are in there. Um, and like I said, for the most part, I feel uh that we are. Uh, but the the other consideration can also be just that we're remote and rural and cost of living. So it's kind of a catch twenty-two, not as much budget. Costs a lot to live here. Any additional questions on this before we move on or other considerations right at this moment? Okay, we'll move on to the next page. So sick leave. Is a new regulation. So per ballot measure number one last year. An act increasing the minimum wage required paid sick leave and prohibiting mandatory meetings about religious or political issues. All employers in Alaska are required to provide sick leave to all employees, except for certain employees exempt from the requirements. I have sat in um, uh, a. Sat on a meeting with the state of Alaska and Foraker Group. And they talked about what those exemptions are as well as is on the website. We don't have any employees that fall into in those exemptions at this time. So for the city of Saldovia, um, we kind of got some basics down the line. The other thing that we said. Uh, that we heard from the state of Alaska, um, from the department that is working on these regulations is. These go are effective July one. They're working on regulations um to let us know how to implement them. They don't anticipate that those regulations will be out before. The uh, the uh law goes into effect. But we need to do our best to implement them. So that's where we're at. I did contact the legal team. And they're working on some language for our personnel policy and everybody's just kind of trying to do their best to implement uh this, this new law. Prior to the regulations coming out. So sick leave as defined by ballot measure one is paid leave that is allowed to be used for injury, illness. To care for a family when necessary, to receive care or legal help related to domestic violence, sexual assault or stalking. Uh, it is accrued at the minimum rate of one hour of sick leave for every thirty hours worked. Employers like us with fifteen or more employees are required to allow employees to accrue up to fifty-six hours of sick leave. And that sick leave balance can be carried forward into the new year. We're not, we're not required to allow employees to cash it out. Um, and we're not required to cash it out when an employee leaves or um let them expend it. However. We we know how that can go uh when an employee is leaving at the end of their time. Uh, so that's an option if that's something that the city wants to consider. Uh, with that, they would accrue fifty-six hours a year, up to uh based on the one per every thirty hours. Uh, and like I said, it takes effect on July one. I do anticipate that there will be a little bit of an increase in budget due to this new regulation. Uh, and I'm, I'm anticipating that being under three thousand dollars, because for the most part, when employees are sick, then. That for that day, that position is empty, but there are a few positions like refuse, senior meals, line handlers. That if they're sick, they're gonna get their sick leave, but we're also going to call in a backup and to fill that. Um, that position while they're out. So thinking of those guys, just a little bit of increase and making sure that you guys are aware that this is happening. Um, and I'll be accounting for that in the budget. As well as presenting a update to the personnel policy. Uh, we're hoping to have that. draft by the end of March and present in April. So if there are no questions on that, we will move on to the other, oh, yes.
Do we not have any sick leave policy for any of our employees or do some of our employees like salary have or different positions have sick leave policy already?
Question. So we do have PTO and sick leave for our full time employees. And our PTO actually counts, can count for the sick leave. Our sick leave is forty hours a year and it doesn't roll over. So that was something I put to legal is do we keep that in place? What does that look like language wise? Is that kind of funky? Does that need to be roll over as well and increased or just make that our PTO?
Over, I believe. I've been staring, I was reading through everything actually again today. So that's, I was like, I was just looking at all this stuff today.
What we can do is come, do is we could combine it PTO and sick leave and make it the same. And there's ways. It's just a matter of looking at language wise, what works best, but technically our PTO counts for the new regulations. We're covered. And the sick leave is, is it would, we would, it wouldn't count towards it. So we have to just figure out how to, how to make it work. And I will bring it back. Great question. Anything else?
Yeah, one more question on the, so we assume all of our part time employees count towards our let's see, I guess the threshold of being a small employer, because small employers with fifteen or fewer employees. They, um, their employees would only have to accrue up to forty hours. And if you're a, a large employer over, with over fifteen employees, then you had to, then they could accrue up to the fifty six hours.
Correct. And we could count up their FTEs and it could be that we follow under that fifteen. But we vary so much between the years, sometimes in the summer where we can have up to twenty four employees. So I can, I'll, I can look at that to a little bit further. But in general, at any given time, we have seventeen to eighteen employees hired. If you're considering the, the full time position and honestly, the state doesn't clarify that if they're going by full time position or just people. But I can look into that a little bit further.
I was just curious. So yeah, I thought we, yeah, it's crazy how many, we actually do have. So okay, yeah, I, you know, I forget when we start talking trash and line handlers and, and all that. Yeah, it adds up that we don't, that I don't think about every single day. So, uh, yeah, it looks like we're, we're over the threshold regardless. Most of the time, so.
I would say so.
Yep. All right. Good enough.
So just wanting to make sure that's on your guys' radar and we'll make sure that's incorporated in the next, uh, in this upcoming budget. And then I also wanted to bring your guys' attention to, and this was kind of cool. We had an employee appreciation lunch in December. And I gave everybody a little bit of homework during that lunch. And we issued a, an employee survey with three questions. And one of the questions was what can the city of Saldovia do better for their employees? So we had seventeen employees that received the survey and we had fifteen returned to the, to the city, which I thought was pretty impressive. Yeah. So we received a lot of very positive responses. Honestly, I didn't, I didn't have any real negative feedback. And I'll, and there was quite a few that said that they, they were happy with what the city was doing for their employees. But we did receive the following suggestions that the city could look at to do better. And one was a gym membership, more healthy lifestyle incentives. Another was to continue to keep pay and benefits at a level for comfortable living in rural communities. Third one was more volunteer recognition, inviting, um, oops, and that's supposed to say volunteers to employee events. More swag and that's something we'll be working on with the new logo. A donut day, which we've done in the past. I've just brought in donuts whenever typically when I travel. So remembering to continue to do that and I, I bring that out of my pocket because I appreciate everybody for holding down the fort. And then the reoccurring one that came up is we actually had four requests for holiday and or some sort of part time employee benefits. And then they all specifically mentioned that. I've heard from the ferry crew a few times that it is that they are maybe feeling a little bit burnt out that they've worked, some of them for years and years. And they know that every Thanksgiving, they're going to be working on a holiday. The last couple of years, they've ended up working on either Christmas Eve or Christmas Day. New Year's Eve or New Year's Day, um, you know, rain or shine, Fourth of July, they'll be working if it's like here on a, on the Fourth of July. And then also from some staff who are are part time employees that, uh, when they're, when the holiday happens, the city office closes. And so they don't get an option to work or, or pay. It's a loss of pay and they're, they're home. So I've had that feedback. I've also, you know, I, I recognize that our refuse, even though they're, they're very giving, they, they work every holiday. But Fourth of July and Christmas and, um, New Year's, when that, when the refuse or when the landfill is closed. And I'm not saying this is something we do or don't have to do right now. But because it's been brought up, I really want to make sure to bring this forward to council as a consideration. And so I did do some quick math on it. And if you look at the next slide for holiday pay, per the Saldovia employee handbook, there are twelve point five city holidays. That consideration would be to provide holiday pay and straight time to those part time individuals who would be regularly scheduled to work but could not because the office was closed. And to provide holiday pay and as in time and a half for those part time employees who are scheduled to work on holidays. For instance, ferry line handlers, like I said, refuse collection. Et cetera. Those are kind of the main two. I, doing that quick math, it came out to about eighteen thousand dollars. So it is a little bit of a hit. And I can work on some scenarios moving forward as we work on the budget if there's interest in it. If not, and it's not the time, we can hold it on the back burner and look at it in the future. But I, I wanted to, uh, to make sure I brought it forward because it was brought forward to me. So, and that, just asking if that's something that the city council wants to see presented in the future budget scenarios. If that's something we can even accomplish. Or just hold on to it and, and see what comes in the future. And I'll, I'll stop there.
Eric Campbell?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
I got a couple of questions. And a couple of ideas. So we hired a lot of, uh, part time employees in the past. The classification for our part time employees were permanent intermittent employees was the term for that. The first question I have is, is for your full time employees, do you have a personal holiday annually for them? Or not?
We do, we do not, but Alaska Day is a floating holiday.
Okay, okay. And then our permanent intermittent employees were entitled to half the benefits that a full time employee would be entitled to. So if they seen a holiday pay, it would get four hours for the day rather than the entire day. They were only working part of the year, you know, so traditionally in America, part time employees aren't entitled to any benefits. But if they're that type of employee that would be considered in my book as a permanent intermittent employee. You know, I could see where there might be some, something there. And I'm curious to see what Jeremiah has to say about that because he has a little better handle on what's happening in Alaska for those type of employees. But to me, that would be something that's more appealing on an initial start, you know. And it would be something for them as well. So I don't know if you thought about anything like that, but that's, that's what it makes sense to me anyway. Okay.
Through the mayor, real quick, I should reiterate, when I did the math, it was at a part time rate. So it was based on what they're scheduled, four or five hours or a couple of them, one or two hours, depending on what it would be.
Employees have twelve and a half holidays, right? So, so your permanent intermittent employees or your true part time employees may not qualify. Or your per, permanent intermittent employees might qualify for six and a quarter days sick leave annually. See where I'm saying?
I see.
Yeah, okay. And, and any thought on that, Jeremiah?
No, no, not really. I, uh, yeah, I mean, we, the way, we're pretty straightforward here. That's, it's only the full times that get the, um, you know, the, the, the paid holidays and stuff like that. The variables and the part times, um, typically don't. But yeah, I haven't really thought, I didn't really know too much about that classification that you were talking about because we've never, we've never used that.
Is that because Alaska is a right to work state?
I, I honestly don't know.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know.
I don't know. I just, I wanted to share it because I thought it might be some food for thought. That's all. I'm not telling you what we need to do. Just trying to give us ideas. I know how hard it is to have anybody work here in this community. And maybe that's a way we could come up with some extra incentive.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was kind of bouncing this around my head because my initial thought was, well, those positions, you know what you're signing up for. Like whenever I've had jobs like that or retail jobs, that was, I knew I had to work on the holidays or I had to. Or when they're not open, you know, you don't get to, get to work. That's part of it. But one thing we could look at are two different things. I mean, it's a lot different because we're a lot smaller, but when I once worked for a very large corporation, there was a threshold as a part time employee. So it was a hour, hourly amount that meant you would get some of those benefits. So it was like a twenty, a minimum of twenty hours a week. Because when it's somebody who's only putting in a few hours here or there and looking at that cost, that's part of why it's a part time. It's a, it's a, it's a piece of your employment. You're not living off of that employment. It's, you know, you're, you're choosing to kind of piecemeal or maybe you have another full time job and that's a part time thing. So that would be one way of looking at that. If it's a part time person that's really got that commitment. One other thing that we could look at with the idea of retaining employees is we have a lot of these positions. And so if you do have somebody that's in multiple positions in the city and their hours work up to an amount that we say, that's another place that I would consider because even though they wouldn't be full time in the sense of their position, if they're working two or three different positions for the city. And they're, you know, occurring those hours, that's, that's a similar commitment to, you know, of a more full time employee in my eyes. But if it's one person who's just doing one small little piece, that's a few hours a week. Knowing what they're signing up for, I have a hard time seeing that our little pot can pay for that. There's other ways we can recognize that it's amazing and awesome. They do that.
How many? How many part time employees does the city harbor now in full time employees? So you don't know that.
I, well, I do, but I'm just doing some quick math to make sure. Right now we have six full time employees. Wait, no, because our, our public works is a, a half. Five full time employees. Five full time employees and the rest are part time.
And how many part time?
So we have seventeen right now. So five full time and twelve, twelve part time. And that's, um, the ferry is not running, so.
And is that, that five full time in all capacities for city positions? Is that?
All departments. Yep, we have five full time. Everything else is ran on part time employees.
I got, I got a couple of things I want to add to that. So Ashley mentioned the twenty hours a week. That equates to a thousand fifty hours. That's what our cutoff was for between intermittent, part time employees and full time employees would be a thousand fifty. But one of the big benefits for us was snow removal and winter operations. So many of those operators that worked for us, they were in the woods during the week in the summer logging. And then they, instead of taking a layoff and being on unemployment, they'd go to the snow stations and work for us. So it was a huge benefit to offer those wages and, or offer those benefits to them seasonally. And that's really the thing that I was trying to share is it was a more, it was, it was more beneficial to those employees rather than going on unemployment from their summer jobs to come to work for us. But of course, then they were entitled to overtime and stuff as well. And they made a lot of overtime. But, um, anyway, just some food for thought.
So one of my questions would be with all your part time, is there any way you can consolidate your part time people into a full, full time position or is most of it, like John was saying, we have snow removal and therefore you need, you know, all of them at one time and then you have nothing. But is there any of the, any capacity there that you could consolidate your part time into a full time position?
And that's definitely something we could look into through the mayor and consider. Right now, we don't allow that because our, our, anything over twenty nine and a half hours, any position over twenty nine or employee that works over twenty nine and a half hours is considered full time, which means they do get benefits. And so we cap that, um, even for our employees who have multiple positions. And they know they're required to come under twenty nine and a half hours. And a lot of the positions overlap, for instance, as senior meals and refuse. And we do have some people that swing between the both, um, ferry. Those are, those are kind of the big three that are under twenty hours, but they, or right, um, yeah, they're about pretty much all under twenty hours. But they're very regular positions that often end up on holidays.
And then Heidi, do you count the, uh, the summer help? Are those more of a variable? Do you count themselves a part time? They're not a year round, you know, a regular part time employee. They would be like a, uh, what I would call a variable employee where they're just here for a short, specific duration. Even if they're working forty hours a week, they're still considered a, a variable employee. Cause, cause it's short, such short time.
Right. And our, and our, um, our handbook, they're called temporary. So.
Yeah, okay.
And those are not counted. No, we're talking full. And it does, this does, so this does include AMHS, even though they are seasonal. There's a ti, a period of time that they're off, four months typically in the year. Um, it does include those employees because they are year round, uh, permanent. We call them permanent full time or part time employees.
Part time permanent, yeah. Okay.
Yeah. And this also doesn't include harbor assistance. I guess I should put that in there because they're, um, temporary.
Temporary also, okay.
The, one of the reasons I'm asking that question because there's a cost of employing people. I mean, that you, whether, and especially if they're in a work safety area where drug testing and all this, you have to send all of them there. Versus if you could cut that workforce down and consolidate them. And I get the point where they don't qualify for benefits as a part time employee, you know, which saves the city money in some degree. But there might be some liability there when you have seventeen people out there versus half of you.
Yeah. Yeah, un, um, they are in a lot of varied tasks and positions, so it, but there is definitely some hazard. I mean, AMHS, that's a, that's a definitely a, a position where safety is, is a, a priority, obviously all positions. But AMHS one comes to mind, um, a refuse, certainly. They're handling people's garbage and, and who knows? Uh, so just something to consider and I, and we can keep working on it if there's some ideas to look at and we can look at what it looks like with that cap. I think most of the employees would probably be out in that case. Might leave like two. But it's something we can continue to workshop if, if the council is all right with that.
Vivian, did you have some?
Yeah, just real quick. Um, yeah, I think, I think it's a good idea that we're having this discussion. I think there's a lot of part time folks that have worked for the city for many years. And I think it's just showing them appreciation for what they're doing. I don't think we can handle an eighteen thousand dollars addition to our budget. But I think the conversation that we can have is how can we show our employees that we appreciate them, our part times? And what we can do to help them out, uh, and for good feelings. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Vivian.
Mayor Campbell?
Yep, go ahead, John.
That is exactly what I was trying to say. That what Vivian just had to say, and I'm just wondering, and that's why I asked about the That what Vivian just had to say, and I'm just wondering, and that's why I asked about the personal holiday. And, um, I'm just wondering for those employees that have been with us five years as a part-time employee, maybe they earn something like that. And it could be used in appreciation. I'm certainly not on board with spending 20 grand. But at the same time, there's a cost to bringing people on board and, and having people going off and retraining and everything. And so I, I, being off the road system, I think we should look at something like that. And maybe this warrants more conversations. Anyway, I'm done.
Yeah. And then the, I mean, the follow-up to that too, is knowing, I mean, looking at our, our pay scale. Um, yeah, I mean, I know that with the high cost of living, being off the road system and just general wages, we know we're still, we're still low. Um, there's, there's no question. So, um, yeah, I think we need to, you know, do what we can for, for those folks that have committed to us, you know, year-round and/or more of a, a permanent time. And then think outside the box, like these guys are saying, what we can do without, you know, taking such a big hit. Uh, I think there's something we can do. Um, we just need to, you know, see, see what it is that wherever everyone can still, um, basically we, we can all be happy with what, what we come up with. Anyone from the public, the online or in person that has any comments on, uh, this agenda item?
No, we don't have anyone signed up to comment and no one in.
Okay. Okay. All right. Anything else? Heidi or Liz on this?
Uh, no, thank you for the conversation. Uh, next city council meeting, we'll have a work session about water and sewer. So we'll start getting into the nitty-gritty on the, on the funds.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Any final thoughts, comments before we sign off the work session? And then, uh, we'll be followed up with a regular council meeting here in about 12 minutes. All right. Nothing. Okay. Well, uh, that'll conclude the work session tonight. Uh, thanks everyone for the discussion. We'll go ahead and adjourn and we'll be back at six o'clock for the regular council meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do we need to leave this site or?
Uh, you can stay on the link.
Okay. Great. Thanks.